This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, June 7, 2023 Southway Hall Township Board of Commissioners meeting. I'm going to call this meeting to order. We have all commissioners present this evening. If you would all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to announce that all public sessions of the Southway Hall Township Board of Commissioners meetings are electronically recorded, filed, and posted on our township website for public access. At this time, I would like to ask our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to review our public and virtual meeting rules.
Thank you. The public and virtual meeting rules are as follows. Courtesy of the floor for non-agenda items will be at the beginning and end of the agenda. Public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker. For all listed agenda items, the board president will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the Board of Commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized and move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually, please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid any background noise that may cause interference in the meeting. The chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address into the chat box. The staff member monitoring go-to meeting will then unmute your microphone and you will have the opportunity to comment or ask a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I'd also like to announce the Board of Commissioners did meet in executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss legal and personal matters. Moving on to presentations, this evening we have a presentation to introduce Rand Yaizy, who is our new Human Resources Generalist, and I'll ask our township manager to please introduce Rand.
Thank you. Yes, I would like to introduce Rand. She began her employment as Human Resources Generalist for Southway Hall on April 3. She possesses an extensive background in human resources, having obtained both her master's degree in human resource management as well as professional certification from the Society of Human Resources Management. Prior to joining Southway Hall Township, Rand worked as both a Human Resources Generalist and a Recruiting Specialist in the private sector. Her vision for human resources includes the following: The Human Resources Department will be the center of work and success of the organization and its team members while maintaining compliance with employment and labor laws and regulations. Human Resources will be serving as a strategic business partner to all departments at Southway Hall Township and operating in alignment with the mission and core values of the township. These values include respect, accountability, integrity, honesty, trust, customer satisfaction, and innovation. Township management and staff are extremely pleased to welcome her to the township. She's already made a positive impact in her time here since April.
Excellent. Thank you, Tom. Rand, on behalf of the board, we very much welcome you to the township and look forward to the great things that you'll do for all of our employees and our citizens.
You're welcome.
You want to say anything?
If you'd like to say, sure, if you come up to the microphone and just make sure the green button is turned on.
Okay, there we go. Can you hear me? Great. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and nice meeting you all. I just wanted to, you know, give a little speech. It's gonna be fast and, you know, short and sweet. So first, I just would like to thank Tom for giving me this opportunity to be working with Southway Hall Township and the executive team. It's been an honor to, you know, to say the least. Of course, exactly what Tom mentioned, I have a great experience with HR. I started with a bachelor's degree in business administration when I noticed that I really am very into HR and everything about human resources. So I decided to continue that journey with getting my master's degree in human resources, then went to my MBA, again majoring in human resources. And the last one was my SHRM certification, which is a certification from the Society of Human Resources Management. It's been a great journey. As you can tell, it's a passion of mine, so I hope that I continue with this journey with the Southway Hall Township. The past two months, I have been focusing on establishing a full understanding of how the Southway Hall Township actually operates and the needs of each department and work group, which has been fascinating to me, knowing that it's the first time that I've been working with a public sector. I've always been in the private sector before. So we have a couple of like goals and objectives that we would like to accomplish, and some of these objectives and goals for this year. First of all, we are starting with updating the employee handbook, update specific policies and accommodations to ensure compliance with laws, create a new performance management system, provide training for employees to increase productivity, uplifting the organizational culture and employee morale, increasing employee engagement, increasing wellness, employee wellness as well, and creating an efficient recruiting and onboarding process. That's what we started with so far, and hopefully we're gonna have a couple more goals in the near future. I truly believe in creating an HR department which is based on open door policy and transformational leadership, and hopefully I'll be able to, you know, make this happen and be a good added value to the township. Thank you so much for your time, and it's nice meeting you all.
Thank you, Rand. Yes, welcome, and thank you for sharing your goals with us. Very exciting. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 4. Courtesy of the floor, this is opportunity for any member of the public to approach the board on any non-agenda items. Is there anyone in the audience tonight? Yes, sir. If you'd please come to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Key, by the way. I live in--
Sir, if you'd speak into the microphone--
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, so you have five minutes to address the board.
My name is Key, and I live in, at the 2427 West Fairmont Street. So I'm here to present you a police misconduct that was happened at our resident on April 6 of 2023. And I also have a proof that I can show you the video projected on a wall to let you know, so I don't lie. So in other words, what happened was, April 6, your three police officer, Haley Morojo, Kevin Azzor, Amanda Soriogo, they came over to our property for a welfare check. So apparently, the first two came over was Haley and Kevin. So they approached me while I was walking out of my yard, and I took like about a few minutes because it was supposed to be a cloudy day like today, and I took the opportunity because it was sunny. So I went out there and I think it's gonna be quick. I didn't even eat, I didn't even drink. So I hurried, went out. Apparently Haley Morojo approached me while I was on the right side of my yard. And then she told me that, what's going on? And she wanted to do a welfare check, which is fine. And then Officer Azzor came over and told me, asked me, what are you doing? I said, like, none of your business. There's no reason for you to know, and you know what I'm doing. You see, I was under the sun. I'm laying the stuff in the sun. But he keep, and he think like I was have some kind of problem with their psychotic disorder or so that make them believe that I did something wrong. So we went on and they harassed me off and on, and I told them, a member of my family was fine last night. Mr. Azzor said that, it was last night. What else do you want? I mean, I tried to be honest and spoke to them, and they thought like I argue with them or I harass them or lie to them. It's, everything was true. And they don't believe it. I said, give me a minute, let me finish this. I'm gonna go in. They don't. They harassed me. Morojo came over and said, why I'm doing this, blah, blah. I should be respecting the police officer. I said, I haven't, I didn't do anything wrong. I did what I do. I told you, it's none of your business, and it was fair, it's not your business. So they carry on, and it make the problem worse, and I asked for supervisor. And she said, okay, she dispatching somebody or contact them. I said, fine, they don't wait for it. They came over, approached my house, which is okay. They opened the door, and they, actually, they rang the bell first. We have a video doorbell. So that's why I have this proof on here, and that she rang the bell so that it activated. We called, what's she on there? And she opened the storm door out, and she knocking the door really loud, ten, ten times. She couldn't wait. She came back and looking at us about the issue that had been happened, that she been harassing me. So she came back and harassed me again while waiting for the member coming out. So I told them, like, I don't want to hear them. I want to talk to supervisor because it's so annoying that you came over here and you're trespassing, and you act like I'm a criminal, when I was not a criminal, and I act as a normal person. Don't tell me that I'm working on my land and you have the right to ask me, and I don't have the right to tell you. It's none of your business. It's true. I mean, if they do have a lot of time and they want to waste their time, go around the neighborhood. We have a lot of yard, people working a backyard. In the front yard, do they have problem with that? Really, seriously, and I'm so upset. And right now, I'm upset too, because every time I'm looking at the video and I'm talking to the Chief of Police, Glenn Dorni, and Mr. Tom Petrucci, both of them are basically trying to cover up what was done. Even though they have watched the video multiple times, they accused me that I was touching her or hitting her and scratched her, and that's the reason why I was arrested, detained. They also took my personal key, which is like this bag, and they think it's a weapon. I have a cap on, on me. They took my cap too. And they told me it was weapon. They don't even give it back to me. After they grabbed them, they took them, they put it away, and I keep telling them. And it was hurting my wrist when they were handcuff me before, like at the balcony, and I'm apologize. I'm really getting like annoying by talking to you because I'm upset it, but there's video in here. Not video, but picture, snapshot of those images that show you what going on in sequence, has timestamp on there. So what happened was she opened the door wide, and I went up and asked her, please close them, because we don't want any fly coming in, to fly in wild. They want my member of family come back to the home to get them something. And I said, you know, there's no reason for you to keep doing that, because it's our home. You need to please respect us. Keep ignoring me, and I was finally able to close the door, and she was fine. There was no problem, injury, anything. And then I was at the door, I was handing, holding on the handle, waiting for the member coming out. She was harassing me, keep harassing me, and then approached me and grabbed me, grabbed my jacket. I have the three layer. I got one jacket and one, like a sweater, and all a t-shirt in there. And she grabbed me and she act like I'm a criminal. She say, you want to be arrested, pulling me down and say, you going down? I said, like, I, why do you arrest? What are you talking about? Why do you arrest me? They don't even say anything, and they just keep saying, they do this, and then they come in, all the two officers coming over, which is Kevin Azzor and Amanda Soriogo, attacked me and bending my arm around, and then just handcuff me while I was up in the front of my house. And if you were so, so like unright, unrighteous, why are all these police is doing that?
Okay, Mr. Blong, thank you. It's been five minutes. Did you have a closing comment?
I do. I need, like everybody here, please speak up for your right and help us and the family here. I'm Asian American, and I feel like those are discriminated, and I feel like we need to do something in the Whitehall Township, Southway Hall Township. This thing has been done, is the harassment and abuse that was done by your three police officer and the two sergeant to our family member and properties on April 6, 2023, at about 11:00 a.m. It's basically an act against the mission and statement in the core of the vet of your South Township as was presented. Also, that's also against the Constitution of America. I need this to be thoroughly investigated and going to, from the top down, which is Mr. Tom Petrucci, Mr. Glenn Dorni, why are they covering up all these things? Going down to, also spoke to Captain, spoke to Lieutenant Kline Top, and all of them are doing that. I have already filed and received some partial documents from Mr. Dorni. We're going to the incident, but a lot of them, if you're looking at and you matching up with the video footage and audio, they're all out of sequence. So basically, they are blaming on me attacking the officer, and that's why they arrest me and they took my property. And then they say, we're so nice, they didn't want to press charge against me. And please help us doing that, and please also, it would be great that we can investigate further, like the whole police department. What happened to them back six years ago? Or they've been done this and cover up in this Southway Hall Township, and it's unacceptable. And I do thank you very much for everyone. Allow me to speak.
Very good. Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you. Would you like to see the video? I mean, just the images that to prove that--
Not during a public meeting, if you'd like to have Chief Dorni or meet with--
I don't need to discuss with them, and the reason I want, I don't believe them anymore, because they've been cover up what's going on, and I want to prove. I want somebody like hired that understand why they treating us inhuman. They don't treat us like American people.
So if I could just ask Chief Dorni to walk through what protocol was followed and what steps were taken in this case?
Yes. Once we received the complaint from She, we assigned an investigator. You spoke to Lieutenant Kline Top at length in excess of an hour. You spoke to Captain Brown for probably two or three hours. You spoke to myself and Tom Petrucci for about four hours total over several different occasions. We watched the video, we read the reports. I can tell you, we conducted a very thorough investigation. The facts are the facts. The video tells the truth. We have three different angles of the video of what happened. We also deemed that there was zero misconduct by the police officers. The escalation of that incident was on your behalf. We then also advised you to contact the Lehigh County District Attorney's Office for any further indication if you thought there was misconduct by the police, that you wanted an independent evaluation, which you did. You spoke to Chief Michael Milan, if I'm not mistaken, correct? He's the chief county detective for the District Attorney's Office. He was also forwarded all the video, reviewed the video, and indicated to me that the officers did nothing wrong, and that you were the person who instigated the entire interaction with the police. The officers attempted to de-escalate. You continued to escalate, and that's what happened. So as far as I'm concerned, and as far as we're concerned, we have absolutely conducted a very thorough investigation. The officers did absolutely nothing wrong. They had a lot of restraint. They attempted to de-escalate. They've done everything until the point where you put your hands on a police officer, and that's when you were detained. We deemed as if you maybe have had a bad day that day. We didn't think you were a criminal, so we did not arrest you. We cut you a break, and we left you go.
Please press charge against me, because that's what you said is completely wrong.
No, we're not going--
Because, because you know, we're not chronological. If the police is touch me, they're not allowed to touch me. I can touch them. If they grab me, I should be able to. I'm sorry.
You stated your claim to the board. Thank you for sharing that with us and bring it to our attention. I believe Chief Dorni has just explained the steps that the police department has taken, and has been referred also to the District Attorney for review. So at this point, is Chief Dorni, next steps for this resident?
Your recourse is you were, I believe you were advised to contact the FBI Civil Rights Division?
I have already contacted the FBI.
Okay, yep. They will have free access to all of our reports and video.
Well, you deny my access.
By law, I have to deny your access. Yes, the FBI, a law enforcement agency, is authorized to have law enforcement video.
Okay, Mr. Dorni, why I'm not allowed to? It's a public record.
It's the law. Act 22.
The Act 22, which is, I submit you the form. Those are the recording of your police misconduct of our property. It was not, that's nothing else. If there's something else hidden, then you can cover that. But I need to, I also have the evidence here to prove you, chronological, you want to see right now--
Which I've asked for many times for you to provide that for me for the investigation, and you refused to.
Correct. No, I said the video. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but at this point, we need to move on with our meeting. You have five minutes.
Okay, could I give--
You've stated your comments to us and Chief, and at this point, he's addressed what your next steps could be. If you'd like to contact Chief tomorrow outside of this meeting to continue the conversation, you're certainly welcome.
Dan Kelly, I'm sorry, but could you spare me a minute and could we need your help, the Commissioner? Please look into this. We need to be in chronological. If the police are touching me, don't say that I touched them first. So that wasn't evident, but they hide them, and I do have the video showing that, and I don't want to show him the video. I want to show him just the capture to prove that we have--
Sir, if you're asking the Board of Commissioners to look at this, okay, if our step would be to the Chief of Police, and then, as he said and you said, went to the District Attorney's Office. So that's where it's at, and there's been no case. So at this point, as Chief Dorni indicated, if you want to go further through the FBI Civil Rights Division or your own attorney, that's fine. But I think your time has been limited tonight. We've given you more than adequate time, okay? We're not cutting you short. Just, that's the policy, five minutes. You've gotten more than that. You've actually gotten 18. So thank you for your time.
All right, Mr. Kennedy, I do thank you about that.
Okay.
Please look into it.
We will.
They told me that they are working under the Commissioner, and I'm asking--
They work under Tom Petrucci--
Correct. We need to proceed with our meeting at this point. Thank you very much, sir. We're still under courtesy of the floor. If there's any other citizen would like to address the board? Is there anyone online? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on then to our Agenda Item 4, which is our meeting minutes. They will be tabled. I need a motion to table them to be--
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. They will be addressed at our next meeting on June 14. Moving on to Agenda Item 6, ordinances. We have a motion requesting authorization to transmit a proposed draft zoning ordinance amendment, Section 350-42H, height exceptions to the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission for review and/or advertise a public hearing for consideration of possible adoptions following receipt of review from the LVPC. I'll turn it over to our planner, Greg Adams.
Thank you. Earlier this year, we had a zoning appeal that pointed out an ambiguity within zoning ordinance, Section 350-42H, height exceptions. That basically allows certain things on rooftops to exceed the normal zoning maximum height limitation within the district. This issue was brought before the BOC, which then recommended that staff draft an ordinance and run it through the Planning Commission and legal review before returning. That we did. The ordinance went through three meetings with the Planning Commission. At the last two, they made several very good recommendations to improve the ordinance. Legal has reviewed it, and what is now before you, got a recommendation out of Planning Commission at their main meeting. So at this point, we are requesting direction to send this to the LVPC for the 30-day review period.
Very good. Greg, thank you for that presentation, and thank you to the Planning Commission and for all staff involved for bringing this to our attention. I'll open up to the board. Are there any comments or questions on this agenda item? Anything from the public? At this time, do I hear a motion to transmit the draft to the LVPC and also advertise the hearing for possible adoption? I'll, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Thank you again, Greg.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item 7, resolutions. We have a resolution extending the conditional preliminary final approval granted to a major plan entitled Proposed Parking Lot Improvements, 798 Housman Road. And Greg, would you present as well?
Thank you, yes. This is an application to further develop the property located 798 Housman Road. The plan proposes the construction of a new driveway aisle and elimination of 13 parking spaces, stormwater management improvements, and the installation of a new water line on the 0.81 acre portion of the 6.072 acre site. This plan was originally approved back in February 17, 2021. On February 2, 2022, February 15, 2023, and March 15, 2023, extensions were granted, the last one of which was to complete the work on the water line. There was an issue with the water line between Luther Crest and this hospital. The applicant has been working to correct that, and right now, they have managed a successful separation of the water lines. However, we at the township are requiring a specific water valve be installed there and legal easements to be put in place, and that, of course, will take a little time to do. So the applicant is here to request an extension again and answer any questions that you have related to the project, and they have signed the acceptance of the conditions.
Very good. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for your time.
Good evening.
Anthony Brickton, on behalf of the applicant, Lehigh Valley Health Network-- I'll get closer, I'll get closer and louder. Anthony Brickton, on behalf of Lehigh Valley Health Network, the applicant, as indicated by the township, we have achieved water separation. The original plan, the last time we were here, was to achieve that separation without a valve that would allow, by basically just capping it, capping it and solving the discrete needs for the health network. The township suggested, which we believe is a good suggestion, that we put in a specific valve that will allow, as I understand it, emergency access for both the township and the applicant in the event that the township needs to access that water line. The township could turn that valve on to have the township get access to that water, and conversely, in the event that the applicant had an emergent situation where they needed to access the water line, instead of capping it, we'd put in a very specific valve. The applicant thinks it's a good idea, and we're happy to accommodate the township in that regard. So that work is in the process of being scheduled. We're somewhat at the mercy of the contractor who's going to do that install. It's not something that the applicant or the township will be doing directly. It's a third party will be doing that. My understanding is that they can schedule that in the next three to four weeks, if not sooner. So we had requested two months to complete that, and then also complete the legal agreements. We understand the township will be providing us with a form of easement by way of a deed of dedication, and perhaps an access easement, so that the township would have the right to access the area where this valve would be and operate it when needed. We expect those documents will be coming relatively shortly. This is a fairly recent issue, so we don't want to expect to have them by today. But, you know, we know that they'll come in due course, and we think between the two, two to three months is reasonable. We had requested two months, trying to be on the leaner side, since we requested extensions before, and the township wanted to keep it moving, as do we. It looks like in your memorandum, the township had recommended three months. We're fine with the three months as well. If that gives us-- we're happy to, you know, request three months. Township believes that's more.
Excellent. Thank you. Does the board have any questions or comments on this request?
Just one question. If we give you three months, you believe that'll be enough?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, are there any questions from the public? Hearing and seeing none, you would be agreeable to a three months, so I believe it's probably wise to just go ahead and do that extra 30 days. So do I hear a motion to approve a three-month extension amending the resolution to reflect a deadline of September 17 of 2023? I can, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Thank you. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Moving on to Resolution 7B, we have approval of a resolution authorizing the township manager to execute an addendum of Declaration of Covenants with IPT Allentown DC LLC, IPT Allentown DC 2 LLC, and an addendum to construction agreement with Norfolk Southern for work related to Crackersport and Eck Road Warehouses, Major Plan 2017-104. And I'll call on our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to please present.
Thank you. By way of background, the scope of work for Eck Road and Crackersport Road Warehouses, the project included, among other things, the construction of a retaining wall and new sidewalk along the west side of Eck Road, as well as to widen Eck Road at grade crossing in the vicinity of Norfolk Southern Railway Milepost FJ-7.01. Southway Hall Township and the developer, which is IPT Allentown DC LLC 1 and 2, previously entered into a cooperation reimbursement and indemnification agreement dated April 21, 2020, and an addendum to said cooperation agreement dated September 21, 2020. These agreements provided for the reimbursement and indemnification of the township for all work related to-- of the township for all work related to arising from the Norfolk Southern scope of work. Norfolk Southern has now subsequently determined that the project will need to utilize contractor-provided protective services for any activities on or adjacent to railroad property because the project has the potential to interfere with the railroad's track or operations. As such, Norfolk Southern provided a supplemental draft construction agreement incorporating these changes for the review and signature of the township. Norfolk Southern officials have indicated that the need for the protective services is pretty much non-negotiable. We have to do it. The burden of responsibility to provide the protective services rests with the township as the project sponsor. The township is the project's sponsor, however. The township, by way of the previously mentioned agreements, has assigned the responsibility and the costs related to the work specifically to the developer. It is the intent of the township to follow the same action for the required protective services. Project sponsors contract, which in this case is the contractor for the developer pursuant to the agreements, will be responsible for hiring a protective services provider to staff this project. These providers are very limited in terms of who is able and eligible and qualified to provide these services. But the township, it asks the developer to obtain a cost estimate, and they do have a provider who's willing to do the work for $13,729 based on approximately two weeks of scope of work for this project. At this point now, an agreement for protective services will need to be executed with this company that is selected prior to any work being completed on or near Norfolk Southern's right away. An onsite meeting also must be held with the Norfolk Southern Track Supervisor to certify any contractor-provided protective service workers on the line and determine which activities will require protection. For the township side, additional security is now required for this project from the developer. The need for the additional security is memorialized within the enclosed addendum of Declaration of Covenants instrument as prepared by the township solicitor. That's Exhibit A in the resolution. And the full additional security calculation is identified as follows. The estimate of the cost in the Norfolk Southern addendum was raised to $159,137, minus what we already held, which was $129,691.48. It's the escrow balance as of the last bank statement. And plus $13,729 for the cost of the protective services. So at this point, we need to ask the developer for $43,174.52 additional to cover all the costs of this project. The solicitor and I did review this addendum with developer. The developer has verbally agreed to its terms as well as to provide the additional security. So the enclosed resolution authorizes me to sign both the addendum of the Declaration of Covenants with the developer and the addendum to construction agreement with Norfolk Southern on behalf of the board commissioners. It is important to identify the fact, though, that I will not sign the addendum to the construction agreement with Norfolk Southern until such time that the developer provides the addendum of Declaration of Covenants and the additional security and associated insurance, which they've already provided. We'll just confirm. Meaning the insurance. We still need the additional security. At this point, I would seek a motion to approve the resolution.
Excellent. Thank you for that presentation, Tom. Are there any board questions or comments on this resolution?
I have a question, and I'm sorry if I missed this. Is there a deadline for that security to be provided to the township from the developer?
They will provide it right away.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Any from the public? One online?
Yes, it's Brian.
You can ask your question.
Brian Height at 1273 Eck Road. I've... When is construction going to start?
Well, one of two things has to happen first. First, we need to have this done, and the second is we also need to have Norfolk Southern sign off on the acceptance of the offer, which they have yet to do. So this is the first step of that process. So to answer your question, Brian, I hope as soon as possible. We just have to go through the proper channels with Norfolk Southern. And as you know, Norfolk Southern sometimes has multiple layers of administrative red tape to go through.
Okay, and at the bottom of the page 45 of the packet that was posted online, and you had mentioned this, Mr. Petrucci, about the verbally being amendable, but it says representatives. What are the names of the representatives that have verbally said they will do this?
I spoke to Matt Culp and Jim Murray.
Okay, I think that should be memorialized, and because this has been going on for four years now, and I think that needs to be, and I don't understand why we're taking a verbal commitment, but I understand.
I can clarify that. I'm trying to move this forward so it doesn't have to go to another meeting. So it's basically contingent on receiving this from the developer.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Please keep me in the.
Will do.
Thank you. Any other online comments? None. Okay, hearing and seeing none, do I hear a motion to proceed with the approval of said resolution?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 7C. We have a resolution to adopt the traffic calming policy for Southway Hill Township. I will call on our Director of Community Development, Dave Manhart, to present.
Yes, so before us, we have the revised copy of the traffic calming policy. Just to give a little bit of background. The policy was originally developed in 2018 based on recommendations from LTAP, which is a PennDOT Local Technical Assistant Program. They did a traffic study on Dillon Drive, and some of the recommendations that came out of that were traffic calming measures and developing a traffic calming policy. The goal of the policy is to set a fair and equitable prioritization process, a public engagement process, notification process. So all of that is baked into that traffic calming policy. So what we have before us is that 2018 version. We also received updated comments from LTAP. Those were incorporated into this document. Additionally, we made some changes to the process based on comments from LTAP and some of the experience we've had recently with the Trexler Boulevard Traffic Calming Project. So that was all kind of worked into this. And again, the goal is to really set a standardized process so that it's fair and equitable across anybody that makes that recommendation. So everybody follows the same thing. So if there's any questions, answer.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you for that presentation and for preparing this for our consideration this evening. Very thorough. I know that public safety has met twice with a group of citizens off of Trexler Boulevard and mirrors what this policy contains, and it was very helpful to have a forum with the public to address issues that they're seeing. So thank you. I'll start. I did have one question about the inquiry process for citizens. Will that be available on our website, or will it only be a hard copy?
We will make it available on the website. And typically, we get the inquiries verbally or on the phone or an email, and then we'll forward that application to them and formally start the process.
And just one other question that I have. At the last Planning Commission meeting, we were addressing a potential sketch plan at Blue Barn and Chapman's, and a couple of residents discussed trucks in that area that were going on roads that were designated not for truck traffic. And I know the implementation transportation plan that you included in this packet did have a section regarding truck traffic. Is this part and parcel of traffic calming, or is this going to be a separate endeavor?
So traffic calming is kind of a roadway treatment, regardless of what vehicles on that roadway. There are methods and a lot of traffic calming measures would deter the speeds of trucks as well as cars. So it has a secondary impact on, but not a direct impact or doesn't directly address trucks and truck routes. But it would be indirectly. So if a neighborhood requested we look at a specific roadway and trucks were an issue, we could work with LTAP to kind of look and see what kind of issues we're having specifically with trucks. And then we can come up with some solutions based on that. But the idea for this is that that would be following this process as well.
Very good. Thank you, Dave. Other comments from the board?
I just want to make a comment about public safety meeting on Monday. Diane and I were in attendance. And I think half the room was filled with people from Highland and Trexler. They were all very, very positive. It was actually asked if anybody was opposed to the traffic calming in that area, which I think triggered this, brought this back to light. And there was not one person that was against it. So it was very, very favorable. I know they're looking for the board to pass this when it gets to the BOC.
Yeah, and I... One of the concerns, and I think this is why LTAP always recommends a policy, because if you don't go through the process and you install something, and then you have the problems and the feedback, and you might have to take it out. So, you know, that's part of the rationale behind the policy.
I have a quick comment question. I've heard from residents as well that part of the reason, I shouldn't say part of the reason, but there is a speeding issue on, for example, Huckleberry Road, and it is trucks. So it seems like this will dovetail with the transportation and traffic control plan that is coming. So I just, you know, wanted to make sure that that was, that would work together because it seems like that's part of.
Yeah, so again, we could run the process on Huckleberry Road based on an inquiry and then start the process for that. And we could potentially look at truck issues that get involved in this. With regards to, like, looking at truck routes and that part of it, that would be tied to our transportation plan. And we're kind of laying some groundwork for pieces of that as we, you know, behind closed doors for now, but you'll hear about it soon. Yep.
Just have a question and a comment. On the bottom of page 12, with the requests by 10% or more of the property owners in the affected area, that 10% is based on the second item there with staff will provide them with the boundaries, and that way, they know what their limits are in terms of who they can go to.
Exactly. So, and it goes to, you know, having that clear message so that everybody's hopefully on the same page and understands. In the case of the Trexler Boulevard, you know, it started at Trexler, and then as staff, we might have looked at and said, well, maybe we should look at Highland. But in this case, we would expand the boundaries and then get everybody on the same page. And that also serves as our notice area and our determination of the 10% and 50% pie-in.
And my second comment is just, in the future, assuming we adopt this, I mean, not only making this clear on the website that we've adopted this and linking this plan, but maybe in the next newsletter in the fall, having a QR code or a link in there just because I think a lot of residents, you know, they have an issue with traffic, and they'll call us, or they'll call Tom, or they'll call Chief, or you. And streamline that, too, that way people know if you have an issue, this is the way to address that. So any way we can communicate this has been adopted and is a tool would be helpful, I think.
Any other board comment? Any public comments on the traffic calming policy? Anything online?
If you have a comment, you can, online, you can unmute yourself and ask it now.
Okay, seeing and hearing none, do I have a motion to approve said resolution to adopt the traffic calming policy?
So moved.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you and all the staff for bringing this to us.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item 7D. We have a resolution to approve the subdivision, submission, excuse me, of an automated red light enforcement, RLE Grant, Hamilton Boulevard, State Route 222, and Lincoln Avenue intersection improvements, and I'll ask Tom Petrucci to present.
Thank you. The township is proposing to upgrade and modernize the signalized intersection, which is located at Hamilton Boulevard, SR222, and Lincoln Avenue. The scope of work will include the following. Traffic signal optimization to improve operations, reduce congestion, and enhance safety. Installation of crosswalks, striping type B or type C in accordance with PennDOT Publication 212. Removal of existing pavement loop sensors and replacement with traffic sensor cameras. Installation of countdown timers and quick release push buttons. Installation of sidewalk and bus stop pads for transit users improves signage. Traffic signal and modernization improvements will include converting any permissive left-turn signals to protective signal phasing and upgrading the existing traffic sensor signals to camera-activated signals. Existing crosswalks on Lincoln Avenue and Hamilton Boulevard will be repainted using a high-visibility design and paint. New ADA curb ramps will be installed on approaching corners from Lincoln Avenue, Hamilton Boulevard, and the median strip on Hamilton Boulevard. Due to the lack of facilities and destinations on the northwest corner of Hamilton and Lincoln, no pedestrian improvements will be installed. Sidewalks will be expanded on the north and south side of Hamilton Boulevard and include appropriate specifications for bus access. The township believes this project will greatly improve traffic flow, reduce crashes, and improve pedestrian mobility safety along a supercritical corridor with over 25,000 average daily traffic and a regionally identified high-crash corridor. The proximity of this intersection, Interstate 78, SR309, causes both increased vehicular speeds and traffic volumes at this intersection. This intersection is also heavily used by employees and visitors to Dorney Park and Wild Water Kingdom, which is a regional employer and popular theme park. 70 collisions have been documented between 2015 and 2021, and this corridor continues to be a high-risk area for both transit users and pedestrians. PennDOT did review the required pre-application scoping form, which we submitted, and offered the following comment. The scope of your project meets eligibility requirements for the RLE funding program based on our review of the project area and proposed improvements. The project has benefits exceeding the requested grant funding. Township is requesting to submit a grant application up to $500,000. The township engineer has been engaged to provide a certified cost estimate based on the preliminary estimate that we put together, as well as just a very rough sketch of the area to help support our grant application. While PennDOT's comment is by no means guaranteeing that we'll receive a grant, we are hopeful that we are trending in the right direction on this application, if the board is inclined to allow us to submit it.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for bringing this to the board for consideration and for looking for opportunity for grants to improve safety measures at that intersection. I was just going to ask Tony if he had anything to add from engineering perspective.
No, I think this has been on the radar for a long time. There's been a couple of grant applications that we have been through the process. This one sounds promising, which is great. And I think that it's been on the radar as development has been coming on the west side, and then even sidewalk plans for Dorney Park will be the first step to really get them across the road. So fingers crossed, but we're working with township for anything that's necessary.
Excellent. Thank you. Any board comments or questions on this grant opportunity? Any from the public or online? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said resolution?
Moved.
I'll second. Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you again, Tom, and good luck with that grant application. Moving on to, excuse me, Agenda Item 8A. We have a motion to approve incorporating a cost-sharing arrangement into the improvements agreement for the Parkland School District Operations Center, Major Plan 2022-108, roadway restoration work required for Lime Kiln Road for utility connections. I'll call on Tom Petrucci to present again.
Thank you. To give the Board of Commissioners background information, on April 19 of this year, the board adopted a resolution granting conditional preliminary final approval to a major plan entitled Parkland School District New Operations Center, subject to the conditions set forth in said resolution. The scope of the work associated with the public improvements for this project included the extension of a two-inch water line from Lime Kiln Road and the construction of a stormwater system to be installed along the same roadway. The utility work requires full whiff pavement restoration of Lime Kiln Road in accordance with the street openings ordinance of the township. Road in accordance with the street openings ordinance of the township. As the township is planning to resurface the Bridgeview Terrace water main in the near future, it's which is also located on Lime Kiln Road, approximately 300 feet away, into 2024, which will require road restoration work. It is prudent to allow for a cost-sharing arrangement between the township and the school district, as two public entities, in which the school district will pay the township for the cost of the materials for the roadway restoration, and the township will conduct the work using its in-house labor. So the estimated cost of the materials for the road restoration is $16,450, which is 1,750 square yards, including both 78 tons of scratch. It's 157 tons of final wear and course. This arrangement was discussed with the school district and its officials, and they agreed to it on face value, and it is determined to be mutual beneficial for both the township and the school district. However, approval is required from the board to incorporate this arrangement into the improvements agreement, which was a way of memorializing the arrangement, as suggested by the township solicitor. So since we have not yet drafted the improvements agreement for this project, we can simply incorporate it in. I was just simply asking for a motion from the board to memorialize that decision.
Excellent. Thank you. I think this is a great idea to partner with the school district to get that road paved. So thank you for bringing this to the board for our consideration. Are there any comments from the board?
Makes sense.
Anything from the public? Comment online. Do I have a motion to approve said motion?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Good luck with your project. Moving on to Agenda Item 8B, we have a motion to reject all bids received for water tower maintenance bid, bid 2023-05, letting date of May 30, 2023, and to rebid the project. And I'll call on our Director of Operations, Herb Bender, to present.
Thank you. Three bids were received and opened for the water tower maintenance bid on March 30, 2023, at 10:00 a.m. This bid was advertised twice in a local publication as required by law. Sixty potential bidders downloaded and received bid documents. As shown on the attached bid tabulation, Manonan Industrial LLC was the lowest bidder. However, they failed to submit a form acknowledging the township's confined space entry policy. The absence of this form is a critical aspect of this project and cannot be waived. Therefore, we consider their bid to be non-responsive. Utility Service Company and Crosion Control also submitted bids and are much higher compared to the lowest bidder. South Whitehall Township Public Works and Purchasing is requesting the board reject all bids and approve a rebid for this project.
Very good. Thank you, Herb. Are there any board comments or questions?
I have a question. Did we reach out to them as to why they failed to submit it? I mean, was it an oversight, or?
It was just a missed signature.
Okay, so, so if we go out on rebid, the possibility is they'll Dr. Ice Cross or tease, so to speak?
Yes, but there is also the chance he does see the difference of the higher bidders also.
Correct. That, you open Pandora's box when you do that. Absolutely. Okay.
Good question. Thank you. Any other comments? Any from the public?
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. I have a legal question. What legally allows the township to reject responsive bids, even if they were not the lowest bid? The lowest responsible bid, it sounds like we reject it.
It is. I know it is in our bid spec that we can reject all bids. It is right in the bid spec that we hold to right to reject any bid.
For any reason.
Or any reason or no reason?
Any reason.
Or no reason?
I don't remember if it was any or no, but I know it allows us to reject for any reason. Yeah.
And the reason why we would, why this board may agree to reject these bids is because we believe we could do better if we rebid it?
My recommendation to the board would be to reject it based on the fact that the low bidder, there was such a huge price discrepancy, and in the best interests of the township, you can reject it for budgetary constraints. And given the fact that the low bidder came in almost $300,000 lower than the next, the second highest bidder, you know, you, from a fiduciary standpoint, I believe, you have, you're well within your rights to reject that bid.
I agree with what Mr. Petrucci and Mr. Bender have said. I think the township is within its rights to reject, as suggested by staff. I would also note that in connection with situations like this, it's not uncommon, and this occurred here, for township management to consult with the solicitor as to whether the particular defect is material enough that it can be overlooked. And the law does provide in certain circumstances for that to take place, so you ignore that particular defect. This was not one of those situations.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. But just another question. This was rejected because it was incomplete. It was missing that one form. Is that correct?
Correct.
And it was a substantive part of the bid, because it was, they had to certify that they were working with the confined space policy of the township, which made up a primary portion of the actual bid specification. So we really did need to receive that signature.
Thank you. Good discussion. Any other comment from the board? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 8C, we have a motion to award contract to lowest responsible bidder, A1 Traffic Control, for Parking Pavement Markings bid, bid 2023-06, letting date of May 23, 2023, Lehigh Valley Cooperative Purchasing Council bid. And Herb, would you take this in as well?
Sure. Two bids were received and opened on Tuesday, May 23, 2023, at 10:00 a.m. for the pavement markings bid on behalf of the Lehigh Valley Cooperative Purchasing Council. The bid was advertised twice in local publication as required by law. A1 Traffic Control was the lowest responsible bidder, and bid tabulation is attached. A1 Traffic has been awarded this contract for many years, and we, as well as other municipalities, have confidence they will once again fulfill another contract satisfactory to our standards. We are respectfully requesting the board approve the award of the contract on behalf of South Whitehall Township and the Lehigh Valley Cooperative Purchasing Council to A1 Traffic Control.
Thank you, Herb. And please pass our appreciation on to Donna as well for presenting the bid tabulations for our review. They're very helpful.
Yeah, she was very helpful on both bids, the water tank and the traffic markings.
Thank you. And board comments on this motion? From the public? Nothing online? Seeing and hearing none, do I have a motion to approve said motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Can I, can I bring up something? I just, dawned on me. I want to go back to Item B, where the rejecting of the bid on the water tower maintenance. Is there any issues? Is, I know we're forgetting that we rejected the bid. I understand all that. But as far as the maintenance of the water towers, are we still going to be okay? I mean?
Yes, no, we'll still be, we'll still have plenty of time to get them done.
Okay.
They're usually not cleaned until the beginning of fall.
Okay.
End of fall. So yes, we still have plenty of time.
Just hit me. Sorry. Apologize for going backwards.
That's okay.
Good point. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 9, Correspondence and Information Items. Tom, if you'd update us on upcoming meetings?
Yes, thank you. Upcoming meetings will be posted on the township website for further details. But the next one is Thursday, June 8, 7:00 p.m., Emergency Management Services Meeting, which actually is held at the Sitrone Joint Operations Center. Monday, June 12, 7:00 p.m., Parks and Recreation Board Meeting. Tuesday, June 13, 7:00 p.m., Crime Watch Meeting. Wednesday, June 14, 10:00 a.m., Civil Service Commission Meeting. Thursday, June 15, 7:00 p.m., Planning Commission Meeting. Monday, June 19, 6:00 p.m., Green Advisory Council Meeting is canceled. And there's later information about some upcoming landscape meetings that will be scheduled, but I will let Dave Manhart discuss those.
Very good. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 10, Direction Discussion. We have direction discussion review of lease option for replacement of police vehicles. And I'll pass it over to you, Tom.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. I would respectfully request that we table this matter so that we can further review it as part of the 2024 budget preparation, which has commenced. And then to further discuss this in a workshop, possibly a budget workshop or a separate scheduled workshop, as necessary.
Very good. Is the board in agreement to table? We have a motion to table.
So move the motion.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 11, Old Business Direction Discussion Review of Landscape Preservation Plan Public Meeting Timeline. I'll turn it over to Dave Manhart, Director of Community Development.
So Chris Stroller's here. He's going to handle a lot of this as well. But we've worked with our consultant. We've done some of our like work to get things prepared for the kickoff meeting. We have it scheduled for Tuesday, June 27. And then we've also scheduled specific subject matter meetings in August. The goal is to have everything on Tuesdays, which are usually a open meeting night. And one of the things we're working on is workbook, so that, we had really good success with that during the comprehensive plan, and having those workbooks available for people that either can't make a meeting or want to participate online. There's also an online survey, which I'll kind of let Chris get into some details.
So as Dave mentioned, we are really looking to kind of kick off this meeting over the summer. Earlier, Tom Petrucci mentioned that the Green Advisory Council meeting had been canceled for June, and we're looking to cancel the July one as well. We're hoping that these Landscape Preservation Plan public meetings can kind of be in replacement of that, looking for the Green Advisory Council, hopefully becoming the Environmental Advisory Council to lead the charge in some of the work here. One of the things that we're looking to do over the summer is actually get feedback from the public through a survey about some of the areas that they really enjoy about the township, some of the landscapes that they see, things that are of interest of natural resources, historic resources, agricultural resources. No better way to do this than with a picture. So we're looking to launch a photo submission survey that could be hosted on the website. I talked to the Parks and Recreation Manager, Lynn Matula, who said that we could advertise this through social media and at some of our events. So throughout the summer, we would be collecting information from the public and hopefully collecting photos that we can then use through the plan and at some of these public meetings to showcase the beauty of the township, what they like to see, and to use this actually in some maps as well, so that we can kind of show throughout the township all the different areas that the citizens really enjoy. And then this helps us frame the preservation options that we're looking to develop as part of this Landscape Preservation Plan.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for preparing this timeline. For us, it's exciting to see another part of the comp plan taking on the initiative and moving forward. So thank you. I'll open up to the board if there's any comments or questions.
I just have one question. Especially for agricultural resources and historic resources, have property owners, landowners been specifically contacted? I know we have a large landowner. They have expressed interest particularly in historic preservation in the past. Have they been contacted specifically just to get them on board right from the outset?
Certainly during the comprehensive plan process, which this really has stemmed from. And the hope here is that in addition to kind of the public meetings and engagement, we will actually be conducting interviews with important stakeholders in all aspects of those, including, you know, some of our farmers, some of our larger landowners that have, you know, important properties and owners of historic resources. And then take that information, compile it into the preservation plan.
Great. Thanks.
Question. Public meetings sometimes are difficult for residents to attend. Will there be an option potentially to do maybe a Survey Monkey or?
Yes.
Put something in the utility bills or newsletter to engage people electronically?
Yes. So Dave has actually been working on some workbooks that, for this kickoff meeting, we will have available to actually help guide people through the information we're trying to collect, but also the messaging we're trying to share about landscape preservation, how we're looking to do it. And these workbooks will be available for people to download and submit to us if they can't make the meetings in person. But they're also really good tools to kind of spark conversation during those meetings.
Excellent. And will there be an opportunity to identify that the respondents are township residents so that we're getting a good sense of?
Yes, yes, in the, in the photo survey. Yeah, so we have a series of questions that we require them to answer, and one of them being, the information isn't public, it's just for us to compile. But ideally, if we do get the permission, we would like to share the photos then.
Excellent. Thank you. I just have a comment and a question, Chris. The workbooks, thank you. I think it's a great idea. It worked out well before, and it's a great way to integrate public comment, public ideas. My question is, are all these meetings going to be here at the township building, or are you going to travel like you did with the comp plan? And if so, will it have a virtual component? I think it's really important to reach as many people as possible with this.
So I think we'll have, the plan is to have them here, because we're talking about township-wide topics. One of the things we talked about in one of the earlier meetings is to kind of reconfigure and have it more of a workshop environment with tables set up and chairs, so it's less of a formal meeting, but also that would, we would still be able to have that virtual component, because we're getting pretty well-versed in running virtual meetings here. So it's, it will, I think that'll work out well here.
Any other comments here, Commissioner Osborne?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Chris, not to be purposely exacting, but really more for clarification, because sometimes I don't understand. But the name of the plan is Landscape Preservation Plan, okay? And you have bullet points, yeah, it's up there, bullet points related to the Landscape Preservation Plan. One of the bullet points is Landscape Preservation. So inasmuch as I thought maybe the other bullet points would explain what landscape preservation covers, does the bullet point that says Landscape Preservation, what does that refer to?
So the bullet points there are referencing specific implementation items out of the comprehensive plan. If you remember, we had about 25 items, one of those being Landscape Preservation, because we were talking about larger areas, larger tracts of land. And then the other bullet points there are referencing other topics that were brought up as specific implementation items. Looking at the goals and recommendations out of these implementation items, we felt that the most appropriate way to address how we can look at specific mechanisms to preserve these would be through a Landscape Preservation Plan. And the landscape is really compiled of all of those things there. So it incorporates more than just the specific parcel that we are looking to protect, or the specific artifact or item of historic importance, and it's more of the character of the area. So as part of this public engagement, what we're looking to get from the public is what are the aspects of the landscape of South Whitehall that are most important to you? Is it, you know, a specific type of architectural building, or is it the story behind a village, or is it a view shed as opposed to maybe a specific plot of land that has development around it? So the idea of the landscape is combining all of these features together, and that this plan would look at, it's a more holistic approach to preserving all of those items than, say, an open space plan that might identify just parcels just specifically for acquisition of property or easements. This, that's included in this, but it, it's kind of looking maybe one level up to see how do all those things integrate to preserve? level up to see how do all those things integrate to preserve the character of an area in addition to specific features of an area. If that helps to answer the question.
Thank you. Actually, I think it does, at least in my mind. I think what I heard you say, which makes the Landscape Preservation bullet point part of the Landscape Preservation Plan, is the view, the view shed, as you call it. So yeah, that to me is landscape, and it's separate and different than agricultural preservation or historic. So yes, thank you. That really does help. So the reason I ask is so that when people come to the meeting, which could be myself as well, that they, on that bullet point, they know what you're referring to.
So that's, I think, David, so that's one of the things that I'm working on in the workbook, is the first page is what is the landscape and how we can describe that, because it's very important for the plan, because we're titling it Landscape Plan. I think the easiest way to kind of think about it is how a historic building, the context of that building, and what's around that building, and what makes all of it important. And it's kind of a shift in conservation strategies, is to look at things more holistically and combine strategy. So there may be opportunities at the end of this, if there's a farm field, we could use Lehigh County money to help preserve that in addition to, I don't know, National Historic Register grants and things to preserve the structure of that, where our goal is to preserve all of it. So there's ways to meld all these strategies together to get, to preserve character, preserve what makes South Whiteall unique.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other comments?
Just wanted to thank you for putting all that thought and time into it. I'm really excited to go forward with this. Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this agenda item? Nothing online? Do you need any information from us, or given you plenty of comments, do we need to take official action? Okay.
No. So the next steps are, we'll start advertising, we'll launch the photo survey, and kind of start getting the word out.
Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All of you. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 12, courtesy of the floor. Again, any opportunity for any member of the public to address the Board on any non-agenda items? Anyone online? Chris?
If anyone has any comments online, you can unmute yourselves now and ask your questions. Not seeing any online.
Moving on to Agenda Item 13, I need a motion to authorize payment of invoices and dispersments.
So moved.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. We have no executive session scheduled this evening. I do need a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. This meeting is adjourned.